Good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM and we shall get started. Our first order of business tonight will be the Brandon Cannabis Control Commissioners Meeting. Could I get someone to adopt our agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as posted.
Motion in a second. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one. We need to approve the minutes of the cannabis meeting from December 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes. Consider an application for a tier two renewal.
Oh, we have to vote to approve the minute.
Oh, I didn't vote that. I'm sorry. Off my game tonight. All in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we can go on. Consider the application for a tier two renewal somewhere on the mountain.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion. Do we have a second?
And is this tier two a dispensary or is it, what does tier two stand for?
Manufacturer is what they're doing.
Manufacturer is the type of license, tier two is the size of the operation.
Thanks.
Thanks.
So this, because I thought I saw them in Rutland. Their retail is in Rutland?
This is a renewal for their operation in Brandon, which would be making stuff, I guess.
Okay, that's fine. I was just curious.
Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second to approve the renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? Mr. Coolidge?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. Is there a public, any public comment on cannabis control? Unheard. Yes.
So, this one is a renewal. So, say next year they decide they don't want to renew it. Can they sell that license or give it to someone? Or it's no longer, they're no longer grandfathered or anything?
Mr. Hopkins, go answer.
The licenses in Vermont are not transferable.
So, once they don't renew it, they can't?
They'd have to just start over again in their process if they chose to apply.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Furthermore, at the risk of opening a can of worms, my understanding is that no more licenses are going to be approved for the time being, not, not by us. Like, this is a weird system because it feels like we're in charge of it, but we really are not. But, from the state, so there was worries about the market just having too many shops. And it sounds like as those sort of, as we separate the wheat from the chaff or whatever, it'll, some will be renewed and some will not, is my guess.
Any other public comment on cannabis control? None heard. Moving on.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn cannabis. Second?
Go for it.
Motion in a second. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Moving on to Board of Liquor Control. First order of business is to adopt our agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
A second.
Motion in a second. Any changes or additions to the agenda? None heard. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
We have numerous things.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of the minutes of the last meeting from January 27th.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Any changes or corrections? None heard. All in favor of approval of the minutes of the liquor commission, say aye.
Aye.
And now?
You can do it if you want me to. Go ahead. So I make a motion that we have a consent agenda item for items three, four, five, six, and seven to accept all of the license renewals and and licenses.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve all of our renewals at once.
And licenses.
And new licenses, yes. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? They are all approved. Public comment on the liquor commission? None heard.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the liquor control commission. Second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment of the liquor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Select Board meeting. Fall to order. Do we need to adopt our agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as posted.
A second. Oh, sorry. I'm fast tonight.
One, one correction is on item nine. To strike the word violation and just say, consider the ethics procedures?
I think that's a good idea.
Any other changes to the agenda? None heard. All in favor of the agenda has changed, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No one. Okay. Select Board remarks. I start each meeting with a basic little remark about being courteous and I will try to do that the same, but I also, for the first time, want to make a clarification of just a minor item. I know each time someone wants to speak, we try to get you up front to the podium. It's not because we're trying to put you on the spot, but the podium has a microphone. The microphone goes to the Zoom and becomes part of our permanent record. If you speak from back in your seat, we can't hear that and it's not part of the permanent record. So that is the reason for that. Being the board chair, it's my job to try to pick out the people that want to come up and when you raise your hand, if I see you and I kind of point to you, that means I've seen you and I'm going to be putting your name down on a piece of paper to call you forward. I want to state that clearly that at the last meeting, I was trying to do that. I've never vocalized that and I feel that I personally caused a situation where people did not know exactly what I was doing. So I hate to have people, I want to have open meetings where everyone feels that they can speak as much as they want to speak. And I hate when I used to sit in the crowd and sit there for 10 hours with my arm up. So, when I see you and I point to you, it means I've got your name and I got you down to come speak. And then I will call you up and I apologize and take ownership for doing a very poor job at the last meeting. With that said, that's all I have. Does anybody have any other remarks that they would like to say?
I'll say my usual spiel too, Doug. Just, I, I like to go into these meetings with the mindset that everybody is here because they want good things for the town and what people think is good might be different, but I think I like to go into these meetings believing that everybody has good intentions and thinking in that mindset, because when I see everybody next week at the grocery store, I want to feel good about seeing them and how I've treated them and I hope that everybody has that same mindset.
Okay. Any other? None? Moving on. Item three is the reoccurring matters. First is the select board meeting minutes from the January 27th meeting.
Make a motion to approve those.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? None heard or seen? All in favor of approving the select board minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? No one? The ayes got it. The special budget advisory committee meeting from January 30th. Minutes?
I make a motion that we approve those minutes.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the January 30th budget advisory meeting, which was a meeting we held January 30th upstairs. I want to thank the people who came to the meeting to hear the presentation of the budget and ask questions. It was a very good night. I appreciate everyone's input that night. Okay, all in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? And lastly, the warrant to pay our bills.
I make a motion that we accept this warrant for $126,660.68.
Second.
Okay, a motion in two seconds. Any questions?
Good luck, Charlene. Two seconds.
No questions? All in favor of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the community who are here tonight in public and on Zoom. I did want to just highlight a couple of items from my report that was provided with the board packet. The first one was to thank the select board and the budget advisory committee and the town staff who participated in presenting the proposed budget to the pre-town meeting and to thank all the members of the community who came and asked questions and shared their comments on the budget proposal. I think it was well received by everyone who was associated with it and that was a good head start on this year's budget process. And secondly, I want to publicly thank the Friends of the Town Hall for the gift of the flagpole that is out in the front of the town hall. There was a flagpole near that spot that had been removed at some point a number of years ago. And I just want to highlight for the community, this is just another one of the many gifts to the community that the Friends have provided and it's appreciated. We did not have any tax dollars or town funds or town staff or equipment time to install this. It was a gift and the Friends have also ordered a flag that will be suitable for the size of the pole. And when that comes, the town will maintain the pole and the flag going forward. Other than that, I don't have anything to add to the report that I submitted, but happy to answer questions.
Questions of the town manager by the board? Just what was the percentage that we should be at on our expenses at this point?
One quick second. I thought, I thought I included it there and then I saw today, I had not included it there. So, 12, 31, 15, 24, 62 and a half.
Okay. And I was pleasantly surprised looking at that document, at the revenue being up in so many areas and actually already exceeding the the year's goals so early. And I don't know if there's anything specific in there that you would want to comment to.
Well, I could say a couple of things. One is that tonight we did have two additional cars or two vehicles. The sales were completed, so that money has been coming in. Tomorrow morning, we expect the last of the four vehicles that were auctioned to be picked up, paid for and picked up. You can see that in the revenue side, most of the departments have in fact achieved their year's revenue and that, that's accurate. The, the one piece that's, I don't want to say the word misleading because it sounds nefarious, but the one piece to bear in mind is that as soon as the year starts, 100% of the tax revenue is declared revenue. So, that in fact has not all been collected. It's one of those quirks of municipal accounting that Sue Gage has brought to the board from time to time when we've asked questions about it. But related to the collection of tax revenue, Jackie has completed the, again, update of the list of delinquencies for the town attorney to send the collection letters.
The buildings and grounds having 33,000 in revenue. I know a year ago, we had one of those that was a insurance claim. And I'm surprised to see it being almost three times the budgeted number. Don't know what that on then, okay?
Top of my head, I, I.
I'll check with you tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, right, Tom.
But it's all good news, folks. Okay, other questions for the town manager?
I've got a couple of comments. Thanks for the information on the police. On those 93 calls, actually that averages three calls a day the police are receiving. And for the off-duty hours, for the emergencies, it's the state police are covering. You know, at five calls for the month of January, really that's one call just over every six days. So, as you said, when we talked, there's really not that much going on after hours.
I, I think that's accurate. I'm pleased that the state police have not had to respond to Brandon more than a handful of times in a month. I think that the board has talked about before, the public has talked with the board before about, you know, winter will be a little bit, I think, quieter than summer for stuff like that, but, but it's an, it's an actual reasonable number. I think people should feel that there is a sufficient amount of protection for life and property in place in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was your only comment?
That was it. Surprised?
Other board member? Questions for the town manager from the public? None heard. Moving on. Community development report. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Doug. This is my community development report for today, February 10th. Brandon Idol is back with the country music concert this Friday. Doors open at 6:30. The show starts at 7:00. Fifteen singers backed by the Brandon Idol Band. Drink service by May's Place, concessions by Dallas Lad. It's right upstairs here. It's five bucks. Some really talented singers. I, it's a great way to spend Valentine's Day. Bounce House Karaoke, a collaboration with Colleen Wright Events, has been moved to March 1st, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Kids can sing and bounce. It's a free offering upstairs. No cost to the town. Local theater group, One Roof Theatrics, is using the town hall stage for a stage play called Private Peaceful on February 20th, 21st to 22nd. Tickets are available at theparamountvt.org. And just want to make sure people are aware, there's an article in the paper. I am currently hiring or looking, we are looking for a replacement for Colleen who resigned from the town and is looking for an assistant rec director, or assistant to the rec director. And that's been posted on the town website, should hopefully be in the paper on Wednesday. It's been posted in Front Porch Forum. That's a 20-hour-a-week position. It'll appear tomorrow on Front Porch Forum, but it's on the town website. And that is my report for today.
Questions for Mr. Moore from the board?
I have a preemptive answer for Mr. Coolidge. Today, we received a check from the fire district for their share of the fountain money.
Whoa, nice mind-reading bill.
You knew what I was going to ask?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, no other questions from the?
Just a comment from me. I really recommend Brandon Idol. Like, even if you don't think you're a believer, go once and you'll be hooked and you'll be glad because there's a whole series of concerts and it's super fun for kids and adults. Like, I know people who go without their kids and also my girls are counting down the days. It's, it is super fun. It is, I cannot, it's like, super fun. So, I really recommend it.
Questions for Mr. Moore from the public? Could be a short meeting tonight, all right. Okay, moving on. Boundary line adjustment up at Darve Circle. Mr. Moore presenting that.
Yeah, I included in the select board packet some information. It's something I talked about, I want to say the first December meeting. Yeah, it was right around there. You know, with the acquisition or planned acquisition of the former Ultravation Building on the corner of Jones, well, on Jones Drive, I guess. Yeah, it's, it's complicated with the roads up there. The research that Mimi Brown, their, their, at that time interim executive director, member of their board, discovered that there was a parcel of land that's been, there's been upkeep performed by the former owners of Ultravation since 1993 when the school closed and they started divvying out the parcels. It was to be, at one time, there was a plan to have a big circular drive that went down by where building K is, or building K is where the Compass Center was. And go by building J and kind of widen out into a circle that was never developed by anybody in the town. I'm not sure if it wasn't forgotten. It was something that we didn't know that we owned until Mimi Brown brought it to our attention in their due diligence in purchasing the Ultravation property. And I, again, I tipped this to you guys, you folks, back in December, but I was requesting that you take some action on possibly doing some boundary line adjustments to square off that parcel, to make it the, you know, the town's, towns right-of-way be 50-foot right-of-way as, by the way, it's for a road that we do not maintain. We do not maintain Jones Drive from the top of where Mulcahy Drive ends and Jones Drive begins. Jones Drive also goes down to building K and goes by building J. We do not maintain that. We maintain the loop. So it goes Mulcahy, Jones Drive from Mulcahy down to New Road. That whole circle we maintain. That is my preamble.
I, I went down there today and looked at it and it's a piece of land that would be undevelopable. I would tell the board if you have not seen it. And it looks like it should have been with that building and its best use would be for the Humane Society to just take down a few trees and whatever. So, I would certainly support this after going and looking at it.
I'll make a motion. I move to adjust the boundary line at Jones Drive, favor Circle, to square off parcel 6158.11. I don't know how you're supposed to say those parcel numbers. And to adjust the boundary nine, boundary line for the Rutland County Humane Society parcel 6158.15 to trace the edge of the 50-foot right-of-way over the privately maintained portion of Jones Drive, which would remain town-owned.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? This could not be used for anything else, but I can assure you of that.
Heather?
Yeah.
Can you send that to me? That was a little long and fast.
Yes, I can, Charlene. I'll type it in now with an email.
Thank you.
Humane Society.
I, I have it. I could just forward it to her.
Oh, great. Tim will forward it to you, Charlene.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. No additional conversation. So all in approving the boundary line adjustment motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? Passes.
Thank you.
Item seven, approve the Vermont Grand Fondo request to use roadways on Saturday, June 28th. This is a every-year event. Viking event that starts on the other side of the mountain and comes down Brandon Gap and then turns north on Route 73. They provide their own insurance coverage, security. There is no interruption or road closings with this event. So it is, it's something that just happens every year with a bunch of bikes.
I make a motion that we approve Vermont Grand Fondo's request to use those roadways as described on Saturday, June 28th, 2025.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could I just state for the record, I have not met these people, I have nothing to do with them, and this is nothing touching on my side hustle.
Thank you. I myself have never heard of this race except for last year when I approved it, so.
Every year in Brandon successfully for a number of years.
I do not even believe this is, people confuse this as part of the Killington Stage Race and I don't. It's just a pleasure ride more than anything that goes on. And I see a hand. So Karen, you may come to the microphone, please.
I just have one request. I was at the top of that hill. Well, I was on the side of that hill on the west side, waiting with a 600-pound motorcycle and a 150-pound kid on the back. And they made me stop on the hill and wait for some bicycles. I thought my legs were going to break. And I probably did a bad thing, but I just went around and kept going towards Rochester. Didn't bother any bicycles, but I think they need to be a little bit more aware that they don't own the entire road. And there's other people that might need to get through for certain reasons. That's all. Thank you.
Hey, any other comments? Motion in a second to approve Grand Fondo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? Item eight, approve the assessor's certificate. Mr. Hopkins, can you explain this?
Oh, yes. This, this, Mr. Chair, is a statement where the assessors let the select board know that regarding the grand list that they lodged this past April 1st of 2024, there's been no suits or appeals pending any decision of valuation regarding that grand list.
Pleasure?
Make a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussions? So there's no changes?
Correct.
All in favor of approval of the assessor's certificate? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? Now, the Code of Ethics procedure that, as everyone knows, or maybe not everyone knows, that the state of Vermont has put upon us a new way of handling Code of Ethics complaints or I guess air complaints. And they had us all take a home study course. And I'm not sure if everyone has done that yet. And then if, the first step was that we named our select board as the point that would gather if someone were to make a complaint, it would come to the select board and then we would determine how to, to work with it. Again, the state gave us no procedures, so we've been trying to put our heads together a little bit on a procedure. And Heather and I talked a lot and then Seth and I talked and this was kind of outlined as step one that we would, after receiving a complaint, we would determine in the public session if the complaint met the provisions of what the state says is a Code of Ethics complaint. And then if, if the board after discussing says it's not, then we go no further. And if the answer is yes, then we would then go into executive session to discuss and litigate. What seems to be quite vague and if you read the state's Code of Ethics information, it's multiple pages, but all it pertains to is conflicts of interest. So whether there is a, the examples that they give out don't really pertain very much to the town of Brandon, but to show you what the scope of them is, it's like if there's a parking lot in town that's municipally owned by the town and we wanted to raise the fees in the parking lot. But then a select board member owned his own parking lot very close by, he should recluse himself from being part of that decision.
I'm jealous of that pretend problem.
There you go. Because.
He had parking.
If he voted to raise the fees and then raised his own fees accordingly, it would show a conflict of interest. And so they just, everything about the whole Code of Ethics is pertaining to this type of conflict of interest, whether a conflict of interest is a direct conflict of interest or a indirect conflict of interest that indirect would be more, if I use the exact same, same example, that the select board member doesn't own the second parking lot, but his son does, then it would be an indirect because his family member does. And it really doesn't pertain, I, I think we all were expecting, we're all going to get a complaint every time we said something or did something that someone disagrees with or whatever. So realistically, the conflict of interest, Code of Ethics, is only about conflicts of interest. So, that's why I feel personally that our best step is to do it in an open meeting so that we can not, I always worry about going into executive session that the select board is going to be accused of doing things behind closed doors and sneaking things under the table. And so the more we do in the open, better we are. So, I suggest that as our policy. I don't know, I leave it open for discussion of how we would all like to handle that.
After talking with you, we spoke over the weekend at length about this. I think that it's a good practice to have our practice be, you know, so say we get an email from, you know, whoever in the audience and we say, oh, you know, whoever in the audience and we say, oh, this looks like they're saying that they have a complaint. And then we, we look through and as, as Doug and I looked through the list of possible sort of shapes that conflicts of interest could take on, to just be able to ask the select board, does this meet criteria A? No? Yes? Okay. How about B? Is that the type that it is? How about C? How about D? And if the answer is yes to any of those, then we need to pursue it. And if it's not, then, then we don't. And I think that that would allow us to really, doing that in open session, would allow us to make sure that not only that we're being thoughtful about every complaint and taking it seriously, but also that, that if for some reason we don't pursue a complaint, people understand why and they don't just feel ignored. But also that with each select board member answering each of those questions, you know, do you believe this is, or do you understand this to be meeting criteria A? Well, if we get one out of five saying yes, we need to know more about that because maybe that person is aware of something that the rest of us don't know, or maybe that person is mistaken. So I think that either way, to me, this seemed like a really transparent and fair way to do things. And knowing that it's mainly conflicts of interest, I think that that's a good route to have as our defaults. The only concern that Doug and I did talk about that I had was that I wondered, you know, if ever there were a complaint that were more personal in matter, or if it was an issue where we really felt like we needed to respect an individual's privacy for a more delicate issue of any sort, that we would maybe need to make a different arrangement. And hopefully that won't arise. But, but that was really the only sort of caveat that I thought of as I went through this conversation with Doug. But I think it's worth mentioning just that if there was the odd case where we thought like, oh, my gosh, even discussing this is totally insensitive to a given situation, we may need to adjust.
Other thoughts from board members? Pleasure of the board? Would you want to make a policy? You want to study it further? Name a couple of us to work on it and come back with a more defined policy. Happy to do that.
That might be the way to go right there.
I'd like to have a, a little bit of a working group with.
Okay. The working group, Seth, can we have how many? Two of us?
I would like to work on that.
I'm happy to, but if somebody else would want to? Okay.
Not feeling it, Ralph?
Not that one.
If anyone wants to read the, the chapter sixty municipal vote, I'd be happy to share mine with any public person. So, all right, let's go with it that we, who does?
Hi.
Claire.
Hi.
Claire, I do need you to step to the mic. You weren't here for my big speech.
I'm taking notes. So I have a question. I'm Claire, Brandon resident. And I'm wondering, because it isn't clear to me, when you say if, if you speak as a group and one person believes that there is a conflict and four of you don't, is, does there have to be a majority vote? Or is one person's voice sufficient for further investigation?
I think that's what we'll have to work on when we get together.
I think so too.
I hadn't thought of that, but yes.
Beautiful. And I would love to take that paper.
Okay.
Okay.
You want it now? Because I, oh, Brian's got it. Here you go. We're all trying to get rid of it. You need to, you need one in one?
Oh, my gosh, you can.
All right. Then we're going to study it and come forth another time with additional policy procedures on that. So we're moving into public comment. And I'm going to start as a board member with another public comment. I appreciate the, the people that came to our budget meeting. I'm always a little bit baffled at how few people go to the school meeting. So I wanted to show up that you all should have got this little flyer at home. The school meeting is on the twenty sixth. And one of the things that I feel is important is that that meeting, there is going to be information about this, which is the Valley Community Center, which, a whole bunch of information here that was sent to me by a citizen. I had no idea what this was. And having read it, in the Valley Community Center is, has a major effect on the town budget in a year. So I throw that out there for the people that you might want to look at that. The first step of the Valley Community Center is trying to open up a rec center at, down by Otter Valley. And they want to obtain ten acres of land from Otter Valley. And there's, at this meeting on the twenty sixth, is the vote. And the only people who can vote is people who are there, present at the meeting. Now, two years ago or three years ago, I was the moderator at that meeting. And there were two people in the entire school district there. That would mean two people would decide whether Otter Valley either gives or sells or whatever this ten acre chunk of land in our town. I'm not telling anyone how to vote. I'm not saying whether I'm for or against the, this vision, but more than two people should be at that meeting. So I encourage you all to go. And they're, they're talking about building a building that in their own packet here costs over twelve million dollars to be shared by the voters or the seven towns. And that would be a huge bond that then would be added to your tax bill. And then they're talking about in their packet, operating expenses in the tune of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, of which they only have one hundred and eight thousand dollars as projected income. So leaving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be covered by this seven towns, not just Brandon. But this whole process will affect your tax bill. I know how much we heard from everybody last year about their tax bills. And yet I have heard nothing about this little proposal. So I think you all ought to try to find him. And you should go to that meeting. So I'm just putting it out there that I think people should attend.
Five people at the last meeting? Five.
So now, any other comment by any other board member? I see you, Vicky. I'll get you a minute. Yeah. Any other board member with a comment? Okay, firsthand, I saw it was Vicky. Come to the podium, please.
Oh.
Six thirty Otter Valley.
Did you get that? Is your mic on?
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Charlene's just curious.
So there's a question posed by Vicky in the audience, asking what, when and where for the meeting that's on the twenty sixth of February, and that's being held at Otter Valley in the auditorium at six thirty.
As one board member, I do not want to critique any other board. I think the Otter Valley has worked very diligently to cut certain positions and things like that. So I'm, I'm not suggesting anyone go to vote. No, I'm just suggesting that people should get informed. Other public comment? Yes, Jeff?
Extremely mundane thing. But I've noticed in the past four, five months, the crosswalk out between the town offices and Ms. Mayo's building, nobody stops at it. It used to be you'd wait maybe one or two cars would fly by you, but now it's ten, fifteen, twenty cars. And I think it's just people can't see it. I'm wondering if there's something that can be done about that. I don't know if a Sandy in the center or one of those little fellows with the red hat and the yellow guys like.
We use those in the summertime, but not in the winter. But would you like to?
We generally use them in good weather. I'm not even sure that we have any on hand right now because they don't last more than a couple summers.
What about the, the blinky that goes on like up by the.
So we, that was researched even before I was town manager. Do you want to talk about that? This is a difficult spot.
My brief time as interim town manager, I spent a lot of time looking into those. The, the set that we bought up by the Congregational Church, about twenty five hundred dollars for the set, which is, you know, there's no cost that can be added to safety. However, the problem with the, the one, the crosswalk down here, because that was going to be the next we want to do, is there's no good place to put it because there's no pole. There's this existing poles right next to the sidewalks. If you'll notice, the pedestrian crossing sign is closer, is actually most past Sandy's building on the southbound. And the northbound, it's just, I think, in the island by the town offices. So it's, there's no good place for it to, to go. But we, we, yeah, it's, it's kind of an awkward, and we could drill a hole into the sidewalk and post a pole.
Yeah.
Would be about the best thing we could do there.
Yeah, I know. It's, I know it's a tough situation, but it's to the point where I'm shaking my fist at the sky going, please let me cross. I'm trying to walk across there.
I, I have to say, I wholeheartedly agree. And that's a really, really scary place to cross to the point where we should, I, I think that's, this is not the first time that this crosswalk has been mentioned. Everybody who has grown up in town has been told, don't cross there. You're supposed to cross by the pizza place because it's safer. And if anybody sees my kid crossing the wrong one, you tell me. But no, I think that that's worth, that's worth revisiting. At the very least, don't the sidewalks get redone in the spring? I mean, the.
Crosswalks, they do all get painted at least once a year. Obviously, we're not going to do it now. We do have eight thousand dollars in the signs and posts budget. We've spent about half of it on signs and posts. It may be possible to get even for winter use, you know, one of those standing, standing yield to pedestrian signs that we could put in the center.
Okay, so we'll look at it. Wonderful.
Yeah, I have two similarly kind of mundane, but they popped up when Jeff brought his point up, which is that the, the speed identification sign when you're coming southbound into town has been out for a while. And I'm curious if there's a strategy for either getting that reset and turned back on, or whether it needs to be repaired. Because I, I know that's been out for probably a week.
So the one on the opposite end of town turned out to be a module that the town staff was able to replace. So I'll ask the town staff if they have noted that. And if not, see if they can.
This is the one across on the Brandon lumber.
No, I understand. I'm just saying that that was the experience.
Yeah. And the other one that's very recent that I just want to make sure you probably know about is the stop sign on, is it Nickerson? Yeah, it looks like the plow mowed that down or something. I was a young person on the way to school, trying to stop, actually on seven, that went off the road and took that out. Okay. It, it's just an important one because.
The fellow in the back there. I don't know your name.
Isaiah Webb.
Yeah, there we go.
Howdy, everybody. I was thinking about the crosswalk too, just a suggestion. It'd probably be really good to move it maybe between like the mobile and there, just because there's, that'd be a better place. It seems like they're too close together. That's like suggestion. The other thing is, is I don't know how many times now I've seen a vehicle parked on the bridge across from Red Clover or the town hall for events. And someday there's going to be a bad accident with that. They're literally like in the lane of travel on the right hand side if you're headed south. And then just another issue too, there's a stop sign on the corner of Walnut Street and West Seminary, which is right by my house. I don't think, I don't believe, I've lived there for eleven years. I don't believe I've ever watched anybody come to a complete stop there. I almost witnessed a bad wreck last night. Somebody came flying down the hill, going through fifteen miles an hour. And there was another car coming up. And then what really gets me about that is I have some newer neighbors that have a three year old and a five year old. And they're pretty good about staying in their yard, but heaven forbid that, you know, the ball goes out in the street and they run after it one day and somebody's whipping around, going, literally going through the stop sign and around a right angle corner at fifteen miles an hour. So.
Yes, we can do is inform the police chief, which we can do.
And maybe Brandon, if, if there was a camera put up there, Brandon could make a huge amount of money just sending tickets out in the mail. Thank you.
I appreciate all those concerns. A camera for that purpose not authorized in Vermont.
So we should just go ahead and take that stop sign down then, because nobody is obeying.
I think we can have some patrols.
Yeah, we can patrol. He's just saying with cameras, we, they can't issue tickets off of the camera.
Okay.
But we can patrol it.
Okay. And I mean, I'm, I'm to the point where I'm about to just start sitting out there and taking down license plate numbers. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Hello. One of the things I find most concerning is I've seen an increase of people trying to avoid the traffic lights by Hannaford and Walgreens. And they're shooting through by Brandon Inn and driving right straight through and taking the right instead of stopping at the stop signs. I mean, at the lights. Yeah, it's happened quite a bit. And I've seen a lot of people from all areas of town doing that to avoid the stoplights. And it's, I don't think there's been any accidents yet, but I just wanted to say it's, it's an area of concern.
Can we sign that just as a not, not a throughway? Or no through traffic or? Yeah.
It could potentially be signed that way.
I, as a real type A rule follower myself, I'm with Karen on this one. If we could put some signage up, I think that it would be worthwhile. Just.
All right, one more time, Isaiah.
I almost forgot about that one. So.
I, I've also, I don't know how many times I've seen people, there's no left hand turn there. I don't know how many times, do we need to actually spell it out for people? No, N O, left turn, because maybe they don't understand that, that, that right angle and a cross out through it means no left turn?
Uh, Vicky?
This, my name's Vicky Disorda. This is more of a procedural clarification because the last time I was here, it seemed like there was a lot of confusion about the, the new ethics policy. I watched a really great video on YouTube this morning that kind of clarified, at least I think it clarified it. And the way I understand it after watching this video is that the complaints would still go to the Vermont Ethics Board, and then they would come from them to the liaison and then to the select board, that we're not actually, the way I understood it, supposed to make our complaints to the select board? Is that correct?
My understanding of it, but it, it may be correct. It's not how I understood it.
Okay, I will send this video to you all so you can watch it. Because it would be nice for everyone in town to know who we're actually supposed to make initial contact with. Thank you.
Initial contact should be to the select board. So there's a form on the town's website that should be filled out, or the same information that's requested on the form should be provided in a letter to the select board.
And where on the website is that?
Page, in the big navigation, it says resources. There's a page that says ethics.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, last call for public comment. None.
I just have something to mention. Doug, just remind folks this Thursday, upstairs, there's candidates forum.
Six thirty?
Upstairs on Thursday, seven, I believe. It's, it's a chamber thing.
Any of the candidates know the exact time on that one?
Yeah. Has, has the chamber reached out to the candidates? Maybe as you guys show.
I thought it was six thirty.
Six, so six thirty is the start time. Probably sixteen, sixteen for the candidates.
That's a chamber commerce event, not a town sponsored event. So.
Bernie at Brandon, Vermont.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's what I remembered from the reading was it was starting earlier than we usually do things. Okay, Claire, one more time.
Thank you. Claire here. I was wondering if you guys have spoken at all to one another about what the impacts are going to be for this town very soon, as the federal system keeps plowing through the resources. keeps plowing through the resources that the most vulnerable of us have. Meals on Wheels is defunded. I've spoken with Kathy and with the library to find out what it is that we can do. I have rallied some people, people that are willing to cook, people that are willing to deliver meals, and the idea of a greenhouse that we can utilize through the winter with some help of solar, that's already at the senior center. But I think we have to get ahead of the curve because people do not know what's happening because news outlets that aren't on the right side of the president are not getting access to information. My husband is a food shelf volunteer, and that's why I got information about that. I don't know anybody that doesn't know somebody that gets Meals on Wheels. Do we need to replace every meal? Probably not. But those people that drove and those people that cooked, they too will be out of work. So we're going to be hit hard soon by the impact of the current federal system of do whatever the F you want. So I think you should check in on your seniors and family and neighbors to see what they may need. They may not even know what's going on. It is terrifying and heartbreaking. Thanks.
Thank you. I have not heard on that. I do not believe anybody up here has talked about that amongst ourselves, because I know I did not know that Meals on Wheels was being defunded. So I would just, yeah, okay. Oh, I see Vicki's hand one more time.
Oh, girl, we gotta feed those people.
Thank you, Claire. I just want to announce for, for this concern coming up, that we do provide community lunches on Tuesdays at the Friend Zone, 12 to 3, at the Brandon United Methodist Church. And also, we are having a community meal the last Saturday of the month, at least during the cold months. And that is a free will offering, so folks who cannot afford to pay are welcome to come eat. This, the 22nd, we're having spaghetti dinner.
Last call on any public comments. None heard? No hands? We will recess for five minutes or so before going into executive session.
I'm pausing the recording. Okay, it's 7:59.
7:59.
Your mic on?
7:59. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I move to find that premature general public knowledge of the pending contract negotiation with the New England Police Benevolent Association 422 will clearly place the town of Brandon at a substantial disadvantage by disclosing its negotiation strategy. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay.
Keep it hanging.
Don't worry, I'll just take charge, Doug. Next. All in favor?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I move to enter into executive session to discuss the town's pending labor relation agreement with New England Police Benevolent Association Local 422 per 1 VSA 313, sub A, sub one, sub B. Is that right? I don't know. For labor relations agreements with employees to include the town manager.
We have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.